Good evening, everyone. This is the Selectment Meeting on February 20 at 6:00 PM, or 6:01 or something like that. We just opened the meeting, and this meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know if you want to talk. Identify yourselves, come to the podium, say who you are and where you're coming from. And to get us fully going, we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I'm up first, so.
Let's take it out of order.
Motion to move number one. Move 25 to discussion with a possible vote to appoint Travis Baker to the Warrant Housing Authority Board until the next town election on May 6, 2025. Anticipated vote.
Sir? So, hi, I'm Travis, you all know me. So, as you know, pretty much majority of housing authority board got dissolved. All but one member resigned. So, I asked for appointment. I pulled papers to run out the next election, so I'm here. For full disclosure, my wife does work for the housing authority as administrative assistant. I did check in with state ethics. I sent forward a Jim an email that I received back from them. Basically, you know, I would have to recuse myself from any votes regarding her pay and things that would affect her directly, but otherwise, they don't see an issue. As long as I do, there's two filings that have to do with the town clerk. One of them being because there's the appearance of a conflict of interest and then the other because I am paid cable advisory, so, because I have a paid position with the town. But that board could definitely use some help because they have no members and basically no members. And there's a lot going on that needs to be fixed up there, so.
Well, Travis, kudos to you because you always step on things and you help the town and you participate in a lot of things. I don't see any issue. I know you guys have any issue.
He's got one question.
You have a question here?
Just to clarify, will you use your position or your authority with the housing authority to benefit your wife or your family in any way?
No, sir.
Good enough for me.
That is one of the, you know, I brought up with the state because the board actually doesn't oversee day-to-day operations. That's done by the executive director, so even the board doesn't have a say over what would happen. So, that kind of helps a little bit.
Okay. Very good.
I think he's a great candidate.
Yeah, I think we should do a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Travis Baker to the Warrant Housing Authority Board until May 6, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. You're good to go, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Do you have an appointment slip?
No.
Oh, okay.
Discussion with a possible vote to authorize the highway surveyor to deficit spend in the snow and ice account for fiscal year 2025 anticipated vote. Jeremy?
Good evening, gentlemen. Jeremy Olson, Highway Surveyor. Yeah, it's that time of year. We're 23 storms into this season with over 31 days. A lot of ice recently, obviously. Costs of things are high and we just got to the point where we've run out of money. So, we want to keep fighting this demon called winter. We need to approve the deficit spent.
Yeah, definitely you're not here asking for something not good. It's all towards the safety of the public and residents in town. So, just, you know, it's like a rainy day thing. Do we have any? We can't do anything.
No, I think, you know, and Jeremy can attest to this, but I think around the same time last year, we did this, you know, same request. This is normal. You know, we need money to clear the roads and to make sure that we can pay the people to clear the roads.
Exactly, it's just a protocol. I just don't want you to feel like you're begging us to, you know, something like that.
No, I know.
It's your job, that's what it is, and it is what it is, so.
And by, even by my track record over all these years now, I'm very, very responsible. When we get to this time of year, I do not buy or spend any money that doesn't need to be spent. So, I always try to keep this deficit as small as possible. But, you know, safety is first, so. You know, I can't take chances with the roads, you know, by not treating when it needs to be done. So, whether it's the overtime or more storms or whatever, we have to take care of it, so.
Very good. Can we make a motion?
Got it, questions?
Go ahead.
As far as deficit spending, how long, how much are you looking at spending beyond?
I'm gonna say right now, we'll probably somewhere between 20 and 25,000 in deficit within a week or so, just because I need to catch up on all the orders and there's more storms coming in. After that, it depends, is spring gonna come quick or is it gonna linger? Because every storm, you know, ranges somewhere between 10 and $25,000 if it's real bad like this one. So, I mean, this storm was, we did, most of the guys did 33 hours straight. I did 35 hours. And then we came right back six hours later and hit it again and then came back and hit it that night. Came back, hit it the next morning. Spent, came in early to pick up snow, came in early again today to pick up snow. Like I said, we're running around 80 hours on the week right now. We still got a day left, so technically two days left. But hopefully we might have to work one more.
The little groundhog in Pennsylvania didn't give you good news, so.
No, actually, the crew in general has not had a day off in almost three weeks now. So, it's been a rough, rough few weeks. We're all looking forward to spring very much.
You guys are doing a great job. We really appreciate it. You know, you can't make everybody happy, but you're doing your best and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Rich? No questions? No questions? Let's do it.
I'll make a motion to authorize the highway surveyor to deficit spend in the snow and ice account for fiscal year 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you, guys, very much. Have a wonderful evening, I'm going to bed.
Next, we have a discussion with a possible vote to determine the lease and options with New England Business Machines for town copier printers anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. The copier, I mean, printing machines that the town currently has, lease is set to expire on April 10. The town has entered into a lease approximately three years ago with New England Business Machines, and they are the ones that have been servicing and maintaining our copiers and printers. That was a 36-month lease term. And currently, we have copiers and printers. There is one in the mailroom here at the Shepherd Building, one in the tax collector's office, one in the building and planning department, one in the town clerk's office, as well as one at the fire station and police station. And there's one that the town has, you know, the ability to get that we have on contract that has not been delivered, that we could put at another location, which is, you know, I think it was intended originally intent was for the senior center. And that was prior to me coming here, but I think that was the intention of it at the time. Although the senior center went in a different direction, at the time, the senior center director was in a smaller office located within that building. And so, she had a desktop printer that New England Business Machine has been providing the ink and toner for as a kind of a courtesy because we are still paying for that other machine. So, you know, the machine can be brought in. I think now that the senior center director has moved to a bigger office within the building, I think, you know, she would be more accepting of this machine. So, I think we could put that, you know, make the request from John to have that machine delivered and put there. So, we're currently paying somewhere around the neighborhood of $1,200 a month for a little over 1,100, 1,200, right around there for all of these printers, okay? The printers have been working fine. There's nothing wrong with them. Their useful life is, can go on for another, you know, three or four years easily. They're servicing them, they're providing the toner swarm. So, we just have that monthly expense of the lease. We could continue on with the same machines. And, you know, John has quoted us of a new monthly rate of $649 a month. That would be all-inclusive for all the machines and that they would continue to maintain the machines. So, that would be a significant savings than what we're paying now. However, we do have to comply with 30B. So, there would be a requirement on the town that we get some quotes and see what other potential options there are. I'm not sure what method or approach the town used three years ago to obtain these things, this lease. But now, moving forward, we will definitely have to comply with the 30B requirement and get these quotes. You know, on face value, I think that this is a relatively good deal right now on face value. I just wanted to bring this initial information to the board. We do have some time. The lease doesn't expire till April 10. I certainly don't want to wait a week before April 10. So, we're gonna get in the next couple of weeks some quotes to do our due diligence. But this is the, a quote that we had received from John, our current provider. It is significantly less, so, but we still have to do our due diligence. And I wanted to bring this to the board to kind of get an understanding of, you know, what direction the board would like to move in.
Well, first, I want to thank you for bringing this with enough time to talk about it and see options. I don't have any further questions?
Yeah, I do. You said 649? It says 699 here.
Yeah, that was his, that was his previous email. I think he sharpened his pencil a little bit more.
So, it's 649 now?
649 is on the latest email on the front page.
And then, yeah, and then would we get less if we didn't do the senior center printer? Because if they don't need it and they've been working fine without it, is it just cheaper for us to buy ink or is this something we already have?
Well, we're actually paying for that one at the senior center right now. So, it was paid for. And it would actually be cheaper from what John had described for him to bring the full standing machine as opposed to the desktop because the desktop can only get so many clicks, printed clicks, you know. You know, the ink runs out quicker on that. Whereas in the toner of the copy machine, you get more lifespan out of your printing than on a desktop one.
Do you have any questions?
No, I think, I mean, if everybody's happy with them?
I haven't heard of any complaints, you know, and the machines are running fine. You know, people are printing to them now more so. There's a lot of departments now that we have them linked up to printers. You know, mine in particular, I, you know, my printer's down in the office right now. But, you know, I use that printer, so it's, you know, or if I print a big document when my printer's up, I print it down here, I, you know, walk down here and get it printed. It's much quicker, it's easier. You know, I think other departments are utilizing them.
It does save a lot of money because we don't have to pay, all we have to pay for is paper. So, I, and I went around and told everybody, look, use these printers. All we pay for paper and you don't have to take your ink out of your budget.
Yeah.
So, they're all going, so I think that's why we saw uptick in people actually using them.
So, between the toner and then if something happens, they break, they get fixed?
Yes.
And we don't have to pay, well, we pay for it in the lease, but we don't have to pay anything more, so.
It's like a service contract with the lease.
I would, I would say this is probably a good deal.
No brainer.
I agree. I will really suggest that the senior center receive the other copier. There's no brainer of having a smaller one against a bigger one. It's just a lot, much better and more efficient. Then, is there a chance we can get a count?
How many?
How many pages have we done?
Sure, yeah, I'm sure the machines have, you know, counters that we can pull off.
They are all black and white?
No, no. Some are color. The one down here is full color.
Can we get the count, black and white and colors or just a count of pages?
I don't know. I can tell you that we've used all the staples that came with it, it was over 5,000. Because I ran out of staples.
Well, my point I'm asking is because I just want to do the exercise of, you know, let's say, oh, let's think that we were gonna print this in staples. And, you know, those prices against, it will be this much.
Oh, yeah.
But I want to bring that to the table while we're doing this contract to save all that money.
Oh, yeah.
I think Karen wants to bring back the old one.
What?
I don't. You don't like things being fit through sideways?
So, we will continue this?
So, yeah, so this is an initial conversation. Let me do some due diligence, let me get some other quotes. And let me circle back around with John and just know that, you know, more than likely, this will be on the, on an upcoming agenda within the next couple of weeks or so.
Okay. You're gonna get quotes on used three-year-old printers?
It's gonna be tough.
You gotta do apples to apples.
Yeah, yeah. It's gonna be tough.
Well, at least to comply.
Yeah.
We do our homework.
Yes.
Due diligence, hard word for me to say.
Jim, will you talk to John? Will you please ask him to please ship me the staples?
Okay, yeah.
I have asked before. I have not gotten them yet.
Okay. Next, discussion with a possible vote on a fiscal year 2026 Selectment's Budget.
Number four.
Did I miss one?
Number four. CMRPC.
I just want to have a small meeting tonight. Review with a possible vote to enter into a contract with Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, known as CMRPC, for professional service related to updating the town zoning bylaws and authorize the town administrator to sign in on behalf of the town anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, before you this evening is a contract between the town and CMRPC for professional services. As you may recall, we received a state grant from the One Stop Program in the amount of $49,500 to do a zoning bylaw update. And with those, with the state funds, we're going to retain the services of CMRPC to help us update our zoning bylaws. The board may remember that we also, you know, prior to getting this grant, we entered into a grant with CMRPC for zoning diagnostic. So, like a pre-planning of a potential zoning bylaw update. So, they have intimate knowledge of our zoning bylaw and they've been helping us right along. It makes sense for the town to continue with the help and support of CMRPC and to enter into a contract with them for these services. The town does have a match of $5,500 with this grant. We have put that $5,500 reserved in our Selectment Matching Grant Account. So, we do have the money to cover the entire contract with CMRPC, which is $55,000.
And definitely, we wouldn't have ever, never even think about doing it with only that amount.
Right.
Sounds like a good deal. I think it's a good thing. We take advantage of the grants, put a little money and we get a lot more. Any questions or discussions?
Let's do it.
Let's do it. Make a motion, please.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved. Now, we can discuss with a possible vote on the fiscal year 2026 Selectment's Budget anticipated vote.
I want to draw your attention to, we have put before, we did not have Selectment C, which is the town administrator's salary expense and procurement expense in our budget. It is now in, because it is in our budget, but it was, for some reason, FinCom didn't put it in my paperwork, but Jim gave me here, so I put it in.
We are still waiting on final numbers for liability insurance as well as workers' comp. We just recently got medical, it's not, it's not part of this budget, but Maya just came out with their medical for the town, which will be on next week's agenda. And that's at a, you know, the average percentage increase was, you know, at the convention, they said 14.9% increase on average. Our number came back and our increase over last year was 15.71%. So, we're above the average. I'm hopeful that our liability, even though they said that liability at the convention was, on average, was gonna increase 1%, but that's an average, you know. So, there could be some that increased eight or nine percent, you know. So, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, once the numbers come back, that we are, you know, that, you know, the numbers won't increase too, too much because these can be budget busters. I have also been in contact with other insurance, you know, agencies that provide similar coverages for liability and workers' comp, looking at trying to get some quotes for them to see if the town could potentially save some money, depending on what Maya comes back at. So, but that's still very fluid at this point. But, you know, we're investigating all avenues because this will be a very tight budget, you know, this year with everything that's, you know, projected. For IT, we did an estimate, a slight increase because of the additional computers of support that would potentially be needed as well as data that would be covered, that would kick us into another data category for retaining documents within our server. So, basing it upon that, you know, we have an estimate here. We won't know until all the computers come in and they're all set up, as well as once we get rid of, you know, the computers that are currently on the system, we'll have a better, more solid number of this. Still a little fluid, but, you know, it's shaping up to be, you know, you know, a slight increase there over last year because of some additional computers and some additional records that would have to be maintained for space there. Still lower than what we've been, we're paying with Northeast, but, you know, it's creeped up a little bit because some additional expenses for additional machines and monitoring costs.
Definitely, as long as we keep growing in residence and business, everything will be okay. But, everything's going up.
You also see your regional dispatch, which is a large increase from last year to this year. Again, that's because of the fact that we were getting grants. We were eligible for five years worth of grants. Well, we went through those five years and now we're, you know, we're on a full payment. and now we're, you know, we're on a full payment assessment with Rutland. As we discussed last week, we're trying to see if we, if Rutland would go into that district model approach, could, could attract more communities to, to, to that, to that rec and hopefully could potentially reduce everybody's assessment. Something that we're looking at, we're having another meeting next week. I'll keep the board in loop as how things progress with that.
But that's not gonna happen now, it's gonna take some time, so right now we look at these numbers.
Correct.
General, any comments or questions?
No, I don't think so.
Just gotta table it to next time.
Yeah, okay. And is that time of the night for warrants and bills?
Kick up questions. Why isn't Entree Technologies on the accounts payable schedule?
I must have missed it, I will put it on there.
And then also, Crystal Rock's not on there?
Yeah, it came in, oh, then I didn't print the right, you've got the wrong one, cause they're both on there.
And then bill for National Grid, Bill is spelt wrong. It's B I, is that semicolon, semicolon?
Yeah.
Do we have the correct one for us to sign?
Yes, I will get it.
All right. I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Accounts payable number thirty-two for a hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Accounts payable number thirty-two A for three hundred and seven dollars and five cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richard Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, warrant approved.
I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Petty cash for board's selectmen for ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents. Weston and Sampson for fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. For Entree Technologies for two thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents. National Grid for a total amount of four thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Crystal Rock for ten dollars and fifty-eight cents. SBA for one thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-seven cents. And Maya for nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Quick question, what's SBA?
That's the structures.
That's the lease for the telecommunications.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richard Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, bills approved. Following our meeting, next we have approval of any meeting minutes, none. Next we have our town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple items that I just wanna report back to the board on for this week. This week I attended the Ware Business Association meeting on Tuesday and what we talked about, actually, yes, it was, I'm sorry, it was Wednesday. What we talked about at the Ware Business Association meeting, we had Peter Banco from Bay State Medical Center, who was the new president, come in, make a presentation, his team was there. And, you know, his presentation was, was kind of, you know, startling, to be honest with you, in terms of, you know, the condition of where Bay State Medical Center is. He had, he had announced at the meeting that on Friday that their bond rating is gonna be reduced, that they're cutting back on projects of seventy-five million dollars of investments in the city of Springfield, that they're cutting back on staff for management, that they're top-heavy. He gave a very clear picture of where Bay State Medical Center is and where they're, you know, could potentially be headed to if, if some type of intervention is not taken immediately. So I appreciate his candid, candidness and his, his honesty. You know, the question that I brought to him right on, right at the table was, you know, you've made all of these investments into the city of Springfield, you have all of these professional buildings there, you're leasing all of these medical office spaces from private developers in the city of Springfield. What have you done or what are you going to do for the people who need health care in rural communities? What is Bay State Medical Center's plan for addressing the needs of the health care of rural residents? And he, he admitted that, you know, their, their, their campus is at a, a hub-and-spoke model, where the hub meaning Springfield. Well, you know, there's, there's residents that live beyond Springfield. And, you know, I, you know, I made it abundantly clear to him that, you know, it's not just in Ware, it's in Warren, it's in Brookfield. You know, it's in, you know, it's in Brimfield, it's in Holland, it's in Berry. You know, all of these rural communities that have residents that need health care and there has to be some type of, 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 of attention given to these residents, because these residents all make up of, you know, the federal dollars that Bay State Medical gets, the fed, the, the state dollars that Bay State Medical gets, and they're, they're reliant on these, on that money to, to operate. And so he heard, he heard us and, you know, he did talk briefly about Mary Lane and he talked about how the site is not as viable as, as some people may think it is. However, Bay State is committed to doing something, whether it be ramping up something at Wing or, or looking at another, you know, mill building in Ware as a possible site, he did mention that. You know, I, I explained, you know, again, the need for some type of, you know, medical facility, a dock in the box or something for our town, for the town of Warren. And, you know, he said that he would have a, you know, some type of discussion with, at, at his next board meeting when they decide these different things. And, you know, I hope that, that he, you know, holds true and, and, and talks about some of these things when it comes up at board meetings. So I will circle back around with him in another month or two, just to try to see if, maybe I can get him to come out here a little bit and, and have a meeting and tour the downtown area. He said he was touring the town of Ware, so, you know, a few miles down the road, you can certainly see Warren and, and look at, you know, what we have and, you know, the needs of our community as well. So I'm hopeful that he, he hears our call for the need of rural health care and, and, and the need out here. He's new to the area, he's from New Jersey, but he's not new to health care. He's been a president of a medical facility for the last ten years plus. So he's, he's aware of, you know, the challenges that, that medicine is facing and, and some of the cuts that are, you know, coming down the pike. So he's trying to, to maneuver that. This week I also renewed our professional liability application for professional liability and cybersecurity. We had to fill out our application renewal with Maya. I filled that out and I completed that this week, sent it off tonight to, to Maya. It was due by, it's due tomorrow, so we sent it out today, so we could potentially get another one percent credit. So we submitted it early so that we could get a, an earlier credit if we got our application. And the application is not due till, I think, May, or April first, but if we submitted it by before tomorrow, we're eligible for a one percent credit. So, you know, I took advantage of that. Budget meetings have been happening all this week. We've been inundated with budget meetings with, from fire to highway, conservation, planning. We have a few out, outlying departments to, to get a hold of for early next week, but for the most part, my initial budget meetings have been probably ninety percent completed now. And the FinCom started, had, they had a meeting on Tuesday of this week, they're having another meeting Tuesday of next week. They're starting their review of the budgets, they're gonna be calling in departments as well. And so we're all working together to get you a budget very soon. Our, just a reminder to the residents and to everybody out there on the Rights Mills Master Recovery Plan, we're having another public meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth at six P M., weather permitting. We're, we're hoping that it will be an okay weather, ton, weather day. So we will have it next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth at six P M. We are, we did put out flyers, we put them on the Facebook, we put them on the website. They're around town, as well as we're doing robo-calls on Monday and Tuesday to remind people to, to come out to, to this public meeting on Wednesday at six at the Senior Center, Warren Senior Center. So it will be the final public presentation on possible opportunity developments in and around the mill. So we hope that people come out. The, that EDA grant that we got when I first started is almost now ninety percent complete and it will be wrapped up by June of this year.
Very good. I, if I, I, I wanted to be in that meeting with, with the medical thing, I will cheer you up. I think you did very well.
Thanks.
Over there. Thank you very much for, you know, speaking for all the residents around the area. I think that, that was a very good thing. I hope they hear us.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, it, it, it's, it's really sad, because, you know, I saw firsthand how much Bay State Medical Center was expanding in Springfield and, and the leases that they would take from these private developers and medical buildings and, and expanding whole city blocks. So they built all of this, they've leased all of this, but what about the people that live, you know, on the outskirts that, you know, have, have, you know, accessibility issues of getting to Springfield? And, you know, it, it's, it, you know, Bay State Medical Center is supposed to be a, a regional facility that, that people can, you know, get to. And it's, you know, there's definitely some mobility issues when you get outside of Springfield for people to access the services that they need. And so, you know, and, and with cutbacks at Wing and now the closure of Mary Lane, it doesn't, it doesn't help any of us out here. And, and so these are the needs of the community out here. We're, we're hopeful that, that they, that they hear us and, and ramp it up for, 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 for people.
Thank you. You guys have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I, for the Rights Master Plan, for the meeting on Wednesday, I would reach out to Jake Olivera and Todd Smola and see if they would like to come, cause maybe they would have some input, maybe it'd be good to hear from the residents, so they can talk.
Okay, I will definitely get out, I'll, I'll call them tomorrow.
On that note, maybe Ann Goby.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we're rural, she's on the, she's the head of the rural.
Development Committee now.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow, see if we can get them out here.
Excellent.
It'd be good to have the bigwigs out here.
Sure.
Excellent suggestions. Okay. Next we have new business. I don't have any new business.
No.
I had something.
You have something?
Good on the topic of you with that. Jeez, what was it?
New business on the topic of?
Yeah. No, I talked about that, so that kinda threw me off.
Well, if you get it back, you can, you can get it, you can butt in any time, just let me know. Old business. Correspondence. What is this Xfinity thing?
Oh, I'm sorry, I remembered going.
You got it?
My new business.
Okay, we're rewinding, new business.
Rewinding, sorry. For new business, cause with Jake Olivera, he put out a thing about National Grid and how there's a bill going around that he's cosponsoring, because National Grid, the bills are getting way out of hand, the rates just keep on going up. And it's, it's getting really unaffordable for people not to be able to pay their electric bill anymore. And it'd be good if we could figure that out and see more information about that and see if we can help out, maybe we can look at it and vote on it as a board for sponsoring and helping out with it, cause electric rates are getting ridiculous there, and they just keep on announcing they're going up more and more and more. So something has to be done with that.
Yeah.
And I know Mrs. Dusty said something about electric rates. We could enter into a program and lock in the rates for the town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the supplier.
The supplier rates.
Yeah. Have you looked into that at all?
I've gotten calls on that. You know, I, I have to learn a little bit more about it, you know, I've heard some, some good and some bad on, on that. You know, I've heard some horror stories when they lock in and, you know, and then if you don't, if you don't renew after you're locked in, the rate's sky-high and then you're, then you're, then you're, you're stuck with that rate afterwards. So there's pros and cons to that, I, I'd have to do a little bit more digging into it.
So we. One thing, you don't wanna have like a cancellation fee. And then the other is you do have to pay attention to when your rate ends, because they put you on the default rate and that can be like double what you're paying. It may only be for a month, though, but you will get on it if you, if the contract ends, so you just have to be on top of it.
Is, is there something like MMA or something like that, will give us any advice on how to do that?
I'm not sure, I, I, you know, I, I'd have to look into what some towns are, are doing if they opted into that, you know, that, that, that type of an agreement. We, we're, we are also kind of unique, because we do get some, some credits from solar as well. I don't know how that would impact, you know, some of that.
We, we have a lot of solar, we should be getting a lot more credits, you know, we.
It's just supplier.
And those two, are we talking about the power that the town offices use or the whole town?
No, the, from where you, where you get the power from, the supplier.
But it.
Well, no, it wouldn't be the whole town, it would be just the, the town as a business.
The town businesses, like this building, fire. But still, it would be really nice if, because all the residents, you know, are in the same boat and we have all this solar arrays, they should give us a break a little bit.
Yeah. You know, if you look at your bill, you know, your electric bill, and, and, and it's the delivery charges that kill you. You know, it's, it's not, it's not the usage, I mean, it's the delivery charges that are usually double the price of, of, of your usage, sometimes triple. And, and, and it's crazy and, you know, when you call up and you, you say, why am I, why is my delivery charge three hundred bucks and my usage is a hundred? You know, why is that? And, and, and they say, well, you know, we, we had to invest in infrastructure and, you know, it's all of the claims that they've had with, you know, some of these big cases that they've had over the years for damages or settlements or lawsuits or whatever have you that, you know, that they're paying now for, you know, these big, you know, fees.
Which, which is getting ridiculous, because they get a lot of federal funding and state funding, they get a lot of money put to them. And with all these, the solar and everything that they pushed everybody in all these communities into, and we're not, we're seeing higher and higher rates. And it's getting ridiculous, it gotta stop, people can't keep on paying this amount.
Yeah, I really don't wanna see my electric bill.
Yeah, when you said you need to look at your electric bill, I'm like, I try not to, because it's scary.
Okay, so you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, we're going back to correspondence. I see this Xfinity letters.
These are just, you know, filing notices that they are required to file.
Annual reports.
And annual reports and, and some of the calls that they've had to, to go on for complaints.
I think I saw something come in.
The Brazilian TV package is ceasing to be used. That affects anybody. And Universal Kids will be ceasing as a march six.
I had an email, you guys, you got it, to the budget meeting inviting Warren for the. I had an email, you guys, you got it, to the budget meeting, inviting Warren for the, um, Pathfinder?
Yes, that is on March twelfth at, uh, six-thirty. I do plan on attending.
What day is it?
March twelfth, I think.
What day of the week?
Wednesday.
John Mason's still on that board, right?
Um, he was last year, I'm not sure if he still is.
Committee, school, yeah, okay. Any other correspondence?
There is a, um.
Why does it say protected communication on it?
Um, because it's, uh, technically a settlement, you know, the, the state negotiated a settlement with the, with the opiate companies.
So we shouldn't be discussing this in public?
Well, I, no, I, I mean, it's, 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 it's for, uh, for the information of, um, the, the litigation that's going on with the opiate stuff. Doesn't have anything pertaining directly to the town, just overall opiate settlement and, and the condition of, of Purdue Pharma. Nothing specific to the town.
Anything else? We are up to comments and concerns. Uh, early today, uh, we had the opportunity to have here Jeremy, the Highway Department. And I mentioned that the intersection of the road that's coming out of the, uh, post office, um, there's a big pile of snow to the left, so cars, when they're trying to approach the corner and look if there's a car coming, they can't see the cars coming, so they get more into the road, and it's getting a little bit more dangerous intersection over there. So I asked him if he knew who piles over there, and he said, well, Highway Department will take care of that. But I said, can we do something so they don't put it there? And he says, I don't know, maybe send a letter? So, I'm looking at, can, can we send a letter to the, uh, gas station, kindly asking them not to have their guy put the snow on that area, because it blocks the view?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That was my only concern, besides all the ice that we have. You guys?
Well, I, do we have any, um, legal, um, bylaws or anything that could stop somebody from blocking the view?
Well, definitely blocks the walk sidewalk.
For the flow of traffic. If they're moving snow and ice and everything, is there anything there?
Haven't heard of any.
If we don't have something, maybe we should look at doing a bylaw to prevent people from doing that in the future. Because that becomes a safety issue where you're blocking the view.
It is their property that they piled it on, it's not.
Well, not that it's on their property, but it's, it's blocking the view of uncommon coming traffic. So if you're driving a small car, you can't see, like Mr. Bellis is saying.
But in the bylaws, it talks about on public property, it doesn't talk about private property.
Well, I'm assuming i- in, in that road of the gas station, there is, there should be, like, it's the road, a sidewalk, even there's no sidewalk on that side, and then the property, right?
It would depend upon how wide the road is, which side of the road it is.
So if you go under the pass, and then you have the road coming at you, and then the gas station, and that empty lot behind the gas station, that's where they're pulling the snow.
Right.
And I saw, and I saw somebody walking there today, he got to go on the road to come back again in, because of that big bump. But the real issue I see is these cars are trying to get into the road, so now the car is coming over here, he's going over the lines, coming straight at the people, they're going up, upside, so I just think it's dangerous, so.
So first of all, you can't put snow on a sidewalk, which I would, there is a sidewalk on part of that.
There's a sidewalk across the street from the laundry.
Yeah.
But there's not one.
Yeah, there is a sidewalk.
Yeah, there is. So minimally, those need to be cleared. If those were cleared, it would probably help a lot.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be blocked.
It is blocked.
Okay, so they, it is page twenty-two, um.
So maybe you can add, add that in there?
I mean, it's, look at page twenty-one and twenty-two.
Got it.
B might apply, C might apply.
David, you have any concern or comment?
No, I just, maybe that's something we should just look at further. Maybe if somebody is going to do something around a road where it's going to block visibility, we should limit the height of the snowbank.
Or how far out.
Or how far, yeah, because, you know, it happens frequently, and I understand people don't have a lot of area to put snow, especially in these big snow events, but we also can't create hazard for other people where somebody can get hurt.
In this case, I don't think the gas station has an empty lot in the back. They own it, so there's a lot of space to push the snow over there. It's just that the guy who's doing the snow is just pushing it on the side, and it's creating something that may cause any more danger, dangerous than it is right now.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a dangerous intersection, now it's a little bit more. Any other comments or concerns? Richard?
I do not have any.
Non-sensational public? Joe?
Joe Conrad, resident. Well, let's see, what can we speak on? According to the news tonight, the opium settlement money. Uh, of the ninety-one million that has been allotted to the cities and towns in Massachusetts, only seven million has been spent. I don't remember how much Warren got, it wasn't a hell of a lot. But it would be mostly for educational or rehab purposes, that at the time we thought, well, maybe we could do something. The town of Gardner has actually spent all the money that they were allotted, they had three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. They opened a rehab center. I prefer not to do a rehab center, because there's all types of problems that come with that. Education-wise, well, maybe we could get somebody into the school system to educate upper-level high school kids about not doing drugs.
We did.
Oh, yeah, we had that, um, guy come.
Yeah, we had the speaker come in, he was a basketball player.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Then again, as for.
Chris Hansen.
Chris Hansen, good speaker.
You also discussed tonight about, um, the increase on electric rates. Well, the gas rates have almost tripled. It appears that somebody actually bought the Tennessee gas line. I'd like to say that they're trying to make all their money back in one year, but Canada has gotten permission and filed permits to put a Canadian gas line across the state of New York into New England. This may help us, because once it gets here, it's going to drop the price. I don't know where in the Berkshires they would connect to the present gas line, probably in Pittsfield. Although they might just fall over to down the northern border, that way they could connect into New Hampshire or Vermont. The other thing that I like to speak of, since I haven't been on the Board of Health for a year and a half, the state tells me every two weeks that I got to renew my ethics. Wait till May. But every two weeks, I get this little notice in my email, time to renew. I'm not going to hire a relative. Even if I could, I wouldn't. And as far as I know, there, uh, I think there's only two second cousins still living in town. So it kind of limits it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody in, in the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No one, well, Jim, no one on Zoom.
Next meeting will be February twenty-seventh at six o'clock.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I got so excited.
You have a second, actually.
You did second it.
I'll take the second.
Okay, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, we are adjourned.